I will call to order this meeting of the San Marcos City Council. This is a regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 15th of 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. Mr. Venia, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza. We have a court present.
Okay, this evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor Tim Faca with Victory Chapel. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you to the city council, to everyone here. If it's appropriate, let's bow our heads. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for the privilege and honor to come into your presence. You are everywhere, and which is an honor to come into your presence today at this city council meeting. In God, we acknowledge your sovereignty over all, and in this meeting, we ask God that you be with our leaders. I pray, God, that you'll give them direction, you'll give them your understanding, you'll give them clarity, you'll give them truth. I pray for these discussions, I pray for unity. As we cover difficult topics and difficult discussions, I pray, God, that there'll be empathy, there'll be knowledge, there'll be understanding that only can come from you. I pray, God, for those in our city that have needs, I pray for them, God, I pray you'll reach into their lives, many with different backgrounds and different situations. I pray for our first responders, I pray for our wonderful city, the city of San Marcos. I pray that you'll continue to bless us and be with us, and that our city would prosper, and that we would please you in everything that we do. I pray, God, for everything that happens in this meeting, that at the end of the day, that we give you glory and we give you honor. I pray you'll bless this meeting, that it'll be productful, that it'll be fruitful, and let every decision made be a reflection of your love, your mercy, and justice. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Next is our pledges of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to the justice of all.
Honor the Texas flag. My pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Next is our citizen comment time period. City council will hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak are required to sign up in advance. You may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You will have three minutes to speak when you state your name. You'll see the timer on the screen. When you get to the yellow, you have less than 20 seconds. When the timer is red and the bell rings, your time is up. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you'll hear the gavel, and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. This is your warning. Those who are for citizen comment tonight will start with Justin Payne. He will be followed by Jim Keith, Lisa Marie Capoletta, who joins us remotely, Billy Callahan, and Kim Porterfield, and then I'll read out the next names. Mr. Payne.
Good evening. I'm Justin Payne, 1908 Gibraltar Drive, San Marcos, Texas. I'm here representing the San Marcos Area Chamber of Commerce, where I currently serve on the board as the immediate past chair. First, I want to start by thanking the city and this council for the partnerships with the chamber over the years. Y'all have been great supporters of so many of our initiatives that benefit our business community, our nonprofits, and also our school district. I'd like to encourage y'all, on behalf of our organization and our board, to approve item four on the consent agenda, which is for the extension of our current lease. This lease extension would allow our organization time to really dig into the opportunities and what options we have available for a long-term building and a long-term location for our organization. So I'd encourage you to do that, and again, thank you for your support over the years. Thank y'all.
All right. Next speaker is Jim Keith.
Hello. I've had a residence here in San Marcos since 1981, and I can remember in this town, when there were ugly litter problems, it was common to see yard waste, tree limbs, furniture, appliances, remodeling scraps, moveout discards, and other material piled up at curbsides. Sometimes it would sit for weeks and the litter would spread. Situations like that are rare today. Since the city started the cleanup programs, the limb drop, and the relationship with TDS Disposal Systems, I've seen major improvements in the curb appeal in this town, and that's thanks to city council and past city councils, and I appreciate that. I have several lots here in town and a lot of trees, so I'm a very regular participant in the limb drop that they have on the second Saturday of the month. I have more than 800 trees, and they shed limbs all the time. I've participated in the community cleanup two times, and I've used the TDS bulky curbside pickup numerous times, and those programs have been effective at reducing visible waste in this town. But I have a concern that you may not be aware of. The community cleanup and brush drop-off day have become very popular. When they occur together, it's common for 60 or more vehicles to be lined up on River Road waiting to get in. I have, on June, after we had the big hailstorm, I counted 74 cars on River Road just sitting there idling, inching forward, waiting to get in. This past Saturday, the gate always opens at 8:00 AM. I was there at 7:00 AM, and I was 17th in line waiting to get in this weekend. By the time the gates opened, there were dozens of cars behind me lined up on the northeastbound side of River Road. And the vehicles in line, they have to be in the right way on River Road, so the other traffic has to go around them and make an illegal traffic move in order to get around them. And it's just been very common in those events. For my second load that I took this weekend, I had to wait more than an hour to get in. There were 35 to 40 vehicles waiting in line.
Sir, your time is up.
That was three minutes?
Sorry, I was waiting for the bell. Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Capoletta, who joins us online. There she is.
Hi, good evening, y'all. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. Do you see a similarity between the geometry behind me and the one on City Hall? Let's do it again. You see the geometry on this first? It's like going to the eye doctor. Slide one, slide two, which is better? I say neither. The city of San Marcos is violating the rights of Buddhists, Hindus, Muslims, Christians, not to mention those who are atheists. And it does, I'm wondering, begging the question, if it wants a lawsuit. Not only is it violating the First Amendment of other faiths, but also those of other Native American faiths. Any other religious group, I'm wondering if we're going to put their spirit animals on City Hall. The permanent mural at City Hall is not secular, it is religious, and it has a Schedule One narcotic on it. And those were the geometric images that I showed you. It's an exemplar case study of peyote art. It shows white man's bias to say it's not religious. It's, oops, just a bunch of animals or circular patterns. It is a pagan mural with a shaman and hallucinogenic drugs with a portal to their sacrament of peyote to their spirit realm. Let's examine the city's track record. The city has destroyed thousands of artifacts and native human remains on text dot CIP and sidewalk projects, and I've even given Dr. Garza an artifact from the Hunter Road project that we found on camera while shooting a video blog. Me, I have three decades of a track record fighting to protect human remains, as well as cultural artifacts, and speeches, letters to the editor of video blogs, as well as speaking before boards and commissions, as well as campaign stump speeches. Is this politically motivated? Is the city peandering to one specific group? Or are they trying to do damage control for the damage they have done to cultural artifacts of Native American peoples here in San Marcos? Within the context of the imagery in both public relations, it is a religious mural, and the mural violates the separation of church and state. It is not a federally recognized tribe. These are spiritual beings of this particular indigenous community, and they're talking about it within a spiritual context, which goes to their spiritual beliefs. It talks about their creation story, and every other faith has a creation story. Even the Community Impact calls it the guardian spirits of the river medicine. It's a Schedule One narcotic on City Hall. And my emails are showing you, and I just showed you the imagery. When will Roman Catholics, of which the mural is positioned right next to a Catholic church, get our creation story of Adam and Eve and Jesus Christ crucified on this cross? When will we get our sacrament of the host and chalice? When will our spirit and animal deities, such as our Lady of Guadalupe, St. Joseph, and St. Michael, and of course, St. Mark? How additionally, can Christians have our mural with holy salt, holy water, as well as holy oil in terms of spirit? The Holy Rosary, when do we get that mural? Finally, the deer represents the shaman, so when do we get a picture of Father Pio or St. Mark or the Franciscan missionaries? Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Billy Callahan. Following him will be Kim Porterfield, John Cradet, Alfonso Cifuentes, Carl Morgan, and Gabrielle Moore.
Hello. My name is Billy Ray Callahan, a living 74th Center Street here in San Marcos, Texas, and this letter is addressed to Mayor Jane Houston and the city council. These comments address the concerns I have about this body remaining silent on important issues such as the Middle East ceasefire, Justice for Mellicott Williams, and Joshua Wright, and the presidential elections coming up between Kamala Harris and Donald Trump. I understand that this body has limitations on its authority and jurisdiction as it relates to the Fifth Amendment, or better known to police officers as the Miranda rights being issued out to individuals who have broken the law. However, I fear that your silence is being taken as a sign that you do not care about these important world and local events. This lack of care may be interpreted by viewers to the November elections as a strong need to replace those who are running up for election. If, for example, Mayor Jane Houston is not successful in her bid for reelection, then all the promises would have been done for nothing. Mayor and, I mean, mayor and council, there comes a time in each elected person's life that they should be willing to do that which is right, no matter what financial consequences to your reputation may be. I would like to address the issue of Mellicott Williams, since this is a recent and local issue. Why hasn't the city council expressed a concern that one or more of its African-American citizens have been killed by the San Marcos Police Department for using deadly force? So in closing, I would like to say that if you would like to run for reelection that are coming up, then you must do something and do something fast, because on November the 7th, there will be a special elections. You must remember that devils vote for Satan, while our creators vote for our creators. So this is all I have to say. I'll see you at the voting booth. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kim Porterfield.
Thank you, Mayor Houston. Can I ask one question before I start my time?
Quickly.
Do I have to give my address? I'm uncomfortable doing that.
No, but a public hearing, you're required to give your address for citizen comment. It's just your name.
Thank you. My name is Kim Porterfield, and I have been, I've lived in San Marcos since 1979 when I came to go to then southwest Texas State, one of the fortunate ones who've been able to stay, raise a family, make a great living here. I'm here in support of item number 10. I was very happy to see that the council directed staff to exercise this last five-year extension with Texas Disposal Services, and that staff is also recommending that council approve this extension. Just, these types of contracts are written this way at a municipal, state, and federal level for a reason. On tonight's agenda, you have four contract extensions and one lease extension. So I wanted to let you know that I served on the council, I'm a little nervous on this side, actually, 2006 to 2012, with Jude and Shane and Saul, sorry, Saul. And we worked a lot with TDS through those years. TDS was already our vendor when I became on council, but then things changed. We became a spot on the map because of TDS and the rollout of single-stream recycling for residential, and then we started doing it at apartments, too. Along with that came a lot of education. It has reduced the amount of trash that goes in the landfill. We want to leave our community in a better place for our children. When San Marcos CSD decided to contract with TDS, that was a game changer, too, because now the children are learning the same thing that they need to do at home. If you have any kids and you try to throw a Coke can in the trash, you're going to be in big trouble if they go to San Marcos CSD. So this, it completes the circle. We have a lot to be proud of. Citizens want single stream. They want green waste pickup. They want, they, TDS also sells recycled things. They sell glass. They have Greenville that sells soils and compost. They have a citizens convenience center where we can take our items, not to mention, just as Mr. Keith did, the bulk pickups and the drop-offs. I still have a big pile of leaves, and I go out every other Wednesday and fill it up and drag it out to the curb. City facilities are covered, the Lions Club, River Cleanup. I just want to finish up by saying that I think that we're getting great value from Texas Disposal Services, and I encourage you to vote to extend this five-year extension. If it's not broke, don't fix it.
Our next speaker is John Cradet.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I'm John Cradet, and I would like to speak to the topic of HEB, the city, and the city trail system. City has offered HEB a great incentive package, worth somewhere around a million dollars, I've heard, to build the new store down on the south side. Considering this financial savings to HEB, I request that the city meet with HEB to explore the use of the small lot that HEB owns on Hunter Road and Wonderworld. It's right across the street from the Lower Purgatory parking lot, which this last weekend was totally packed and overfilled. This property backs up to Purgatory Creek and would connect the trail system that the city has on Lower Purgatory to the new one that's being built on Purgatory Creek, which will soon link that area down to the river, down to the children's park. It'll run through Victoria Gardens and Dunbar area. This is a keystone piece of property for the city trail system. A trail connection through here would allow families and children to hike and bike from the river, from Victoria Garden, from Dunbar neighborhoods, and have access to the city trail system without having to be on the city streets, which can be quite busy at times. A much safer route for the city children and families to follow. If that one little piece of property could be acquired by the city or some type of an agreement made with HEB to allow the city to have a trail or area through there. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Alfonso Cifuentes.
Mayor, council, city staff, good evening. My name is Alfonso Cifuentes, and I'm the municipal manager for Republic Services. As you know, I've previously worn a different uniform as Central Texas Refuge, which was acquired. With me, I have my general manager, Mr. David Butler, here. So just, last time we appeared here was on August 5th in 2024, and we also had some of your constituents in business and community leaders appealing to your fiduciary duty to consider putting out to bid the city solid waste and recycling contract. It only makes sense, since the market has changed, since this contract was first awarded about 20 years ago. But of course, we ask you to consider Republic Services. It's one of the most resourceful waste companies in the nation, and I assure you that Republic Services can provide any service that your city demands, including composting and many other services. We welcome an open discussion and to lay out all the details, which is why we're asking that you table item 10, so that you have ample opportunity to have all your questions answered and appease any doubts of our capabilities. We have great relationships with a lot of municipal utility districts and cities we serve. We just, we don't just see it as a business relationship, but we see it as a partnership. Your community becomes our community. The four-plus years that I've been involved in San Marcos is just a good indication of who we are, and it's, I believe, is a testament of our core principles. We are a regional partner that is a viable option and feel there will be an added benefit to your progressive city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carl Morgan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, city council. My name is Carl Morgan, manager of JSMC Industries. I came to San Marcos about nine months ago. You've been on city council for nine years in another city in the state great state of Texas. I'm on the question and answer survey of tonight, so I won't take up too much of your time, so I have to put on the citizen comment period, because I'm not understanding y'all's MO here in the city of San Marcos. Y'all are dictating a lot of stuff about businesses here, but only in the towing industry. So I have a lot of questions for y'all tonight. I'm trying to understand why y'all are throat-cutting the towing industry here and allowing all these people to do all these things in the city of San Marcos, and y'all are taking money out of our pockets without subsidies. So I'm not quite understanding how y'all sit in these seats when us, the people, put y'all there, and y'all make up these rules as y'all go along, and y'all don't have the authority to do that. So how do y'all pick and choose on this? So I'm on the question, that's all I have to say. I'm on the question and answer. I'm going to ask you, you're the mayor, right, Ms. Jane?
Yes, sir.
On the question and answer, do I get to ask, because this is my first time here. Back home, I could ask each individual member a question, and it's the question and answer section of the meeting. Is that the same in the city of San Marcos?
No, sir. The question would be to us as a group and staff. If it's something that can be answered quickly and easily and accurately, we will answer it. If not, what we will do is we will have staff prepare an answer, and if you'll leave us an email address, we will get that information to you.
I've actually mailed a letter to each and every one of y'all. I've hired an attorney now, because I'm trying to find out how y'all are doing this. I've got so many seconds left. So what questions am I allowed to ask at the meeting, so I don't get in too far into y'all's situation here?
Those, this isn't...
Because I want everything to be public, because FOIA allows me to find out these things, and I want to know how y'all are coming up with this, is what I want to know, is how y'all are coming. Because if you allow McDonald's or a lawyer to do whatever they want to sound, but you're going to dictate one industry in your city to say, "We have to do this," when Texas says, "I can do this," but the city's saying, "I have to do this." So I'm trying to find this out. So what course of action do I have as the city of San Marcos? I wrote you a letter, Mayor, so I've never got a response. I've left a message at your office, I've never got a response. So as the citizens in the city that I pay taxes in, I wonder, how do I get to my city council people?
Okay. This is for citizen comment, for you to speak for three minutes. The question and answer portion is at the end of the meeting. I think this is something that is better done. I'd be happy to meet with you. I do not recall seeing a letter from you or a phone message, so I'm sorry. I will look for that and see where that might be. I'm happy to meet with you.
Yeah, I really didn't want to come here, right? I really wanted to just meet with you personally, right?
Yes.
That's how I usually do things, to private...
We, if, we've got your email address. I'll contact you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our next speaker is Gabrielle Moore.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. I'm Gabrielle Moore, and I'm here to talk about consent agenda item two, the comprehensive plan. First of all, thank you for all of the work that everyone did on it. Really, it's the only request, excuse me, change request, would be something very minor, but it's, I think it's important that the appendix sections A through E be referenced, be listed in the table of contents with their associated page numbers, so people know where to find it. Otherwise, I just, I don't even want to make any other requests. Thank you.
Okay. And that concludes our citizen comment time period. I would like to invite Mr. Bryant forward. You know, we've got a lot of direct city employees who do lots of good work in our city, and we appreciate them, but there are some services that we contract out, and so those folks do an important job for our city also, even though you're not directly city employees. Mr. Bryant, would you like to introduce the folks that you have here with you today in the microphone?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I just want to take, my name is Ray Bryant with Texas Disposal Systems, and I just want to take time. Some of you don't know who service you out there in wee early days of the morning. They've been here since four or five o'clock in the morning. They're pretty tired, so they've come to just be, would you guys, I'd like the drivers and everyone to stand. We have the drivers, if you guys will stand here, that, when the dust settles, these are the real heroes. These are the ones that do it. You put it out and go to work, when you come back, it's gone, recycling and trash. Just wanted to honor and recognize them today. Also, our management team, if you would stand as well, have a management team here that also is available 24/7. And Julio, if you could raise your hand. Julio has been with us 26 years, and he is the director of all the residential in the central area. I just wanted to honor and just recognize them and give them a hand. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the work that you do for us in the city, and you're welcome to stay, but we know how long you've been up, so if you feel like you need to leave now, we would not be offended. So it's up to you. All right. Thanking you for helping keep our city clean. Okay. At council, it is now time to look at our consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items numbered one through 11 may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member wishes to pull that item. If so, what we do is we take those up after the public hearing, hearings that we may have, and I'm wishing to pull item two. No, I don't have a bunch of amendments in my pocket. I want to do some thank yous, and I have one more thing to talk about. So I've got item two. Does anybody have anything else, any other item they wish to pull? Did you say number four, Mr. Scott?
Four and 10.
And 10, okay. All right, are there any others?
If not, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items one through 11 with the absence of two, four, and 10.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Prather. We have a second by Mr. Gleason. Ms. Trevino, are we voting with push buttons tonight? Oh, yippee.
Okay, the motion passes 6 to 0 with one absent.
All right, so we will take those items up after public hearings, of which we only have one this evening. Ms. Trevino, would you read item 12, please?
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-52, admitting the official zoning map of the city and case number ZZ-24-03 by resorting approximately 1.132 acres of land in haze... by rezoning approximately 1.132 acres of land in Hayes County, Texas, located at 2807 Hunter Road for multiple family residential MF-18 district to character District 5, CD5, or subject to consent of the owner and other less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date and consider approval of ordinance 2024-52 on the first of two readings.
Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. The subject property is a little over one acre in size and is located along Hunter Road near Reimer Avenue and Quarry Springs Drive. Next slide. The property is currently vacant and is surrounded by vacant land, commercial uses, and single-family homes in the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction across Hunter Road. Next slide. The property is currently zoned for multifamily uses at 18 units per acre, which is MF-18. The applicant does not have a development plan for the property at this time and indicated at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that they have been approached to sell the property for commercial uses. The applicant requested Character District 5, CD5 zoning due to the flexibility of allowable uses, which includes commercial and multifamily. Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend approval of CD5 and instead recommended a less intense zoning district of neighborhood, commercial, or NCM, which allows very limited residential and commercial uses, which are fairly similar to those which are permitted in Character District 5. Throughout this presentation, I'm going to be discussing both the applicant's initial request and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Next slide. On the comprehensive plan, the property is located in a medium intensity zone where we anticipate growth and change. Next slide. In the development code on Table 4.1, it says that character districts should be considered in these medium intensity zones, and the applicant's initial request was for a character district. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of neighborhood commercial sends us to next slide, which is Table 4.4, which indicates that neighborhood commercial is actually not preferred. I will note that while discussing the recommendation, Planning and Zoning Commission did not have the benefit of having this table in front of them. They were looking at which zoning districts were less intense from Character District 5 and which zoning districts would allow commercial uses. And no other commercial zoning districts would have been allowed to be recommended because they are considered more intense. Next slide. Looking a little bit more detail at the zoning districts, the applicant's requested CD5, Character District 5 allows a variety of uses, including multifamily and commercial, and it also has those additional standards like two-story minimum, five-story maximum. Next slide. Neighborhood commercial, which was recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission, again, is more limited in the residential use options and allows a variety of commercial uses. Next slide. The property is located within the Edwards Aquifer Transition Zone, and no matter what zoning district it has, the requirements are the same. Next slide. Any future development must meet all code requirements and will receive city utilities. Next slide. As mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a less intense zoning district than what was requested by the applicant. The commission mentioned concerns with the five-story buildings, which are allowed, and asked what uses were permitted in Character District 5, as well as what potential traffic impacts there may be. We did talk about residential uses, commercial uses, and that a traffic impact analysis is required at the time of plating. At this time, again, the applicant does not have a development plan. They are interested in selling the property and indicated that those who are interested in purchasing the property are interested in commercial and some office uses. At Planning Commission, we talked about where other Character District 5 zoning is located, and there is some in the area around the corner on McCarty Lane, which is proposed for apartment uses. And finally, P&amp;Z discussed what commercial options were available that were considered less intense than Character District 5, which is how Planning and Zoning Commission came to their recommendation of neighborhood commercial. Staff recommended approval of the original Character District 5 request. If City Council chooses to approve the original request, we would require a supermajority vote. If City Council chooses to approve the neighborhood commercial zoning district, I just want to make note that staff will bring back a neighborhood regulating plan for second reading, which is a requirement of a neighborhood density district, and will include information about existing and proposed conditions on the property. The applicant is available, and that concludes my presentation.
Question, if we are going to need to-
Let me do the public hearing first. Open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak far against or about this item. If you'll please step up to the podium. We need your name and your address. And you have three minutes.
William McDonald, 122 Camp Porter, New Braunfels. It's, it's my sister and I that are trying to get this property, this piece of property rezoned, and the CD5, I do not believe is what we're really looking for. We're not looking, you know, we haven't had anybody approach us to build apartment complexes or anything like that. That's not what we're looking for in this. We've had different types of businesses that have been interested in the apartments. We're like a GM flex office center, retail commercial land, and, and then also a dentist off, also, a dentist office also inquired about it. It's businesses of these, this nature that I believe that, you know, we're trying to get it rezoned for. And we've heard from different residences around, residents around there that are in favor, you know, would like to see some of these businesses out in that area. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Far against or about? Okay. See, no one coming forward.
Wait, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Ms. Capoletta didn't see you there.
Hi, good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. I live at 1322 Belvin. I don't know if the other speaker gave his address. The citizens of San Marcos have participated in Code SMTX, which was a massive outreach plan for citizen engagement. We also participate in the Comprehensive Master Plan, yet another massive outreach of plan. We've worked on many of your campaigns judiciously, and we voted for you, and we have trusted city staff through this process. The packet, it's troubling that your city planner is not acknowledging on camera because most citizens are not going to take the time or don't have the skill set to pull the packet. So I would ask somebody on the dais, when you guys start to render this discussion, to pull the letters from the citizens who live in the area, which disputes the claims of the previous speaker that says that there are individuals in favor, because you do not see any letters in that packet in favor of this development. But you do see a myriad of letters from residents who do own property and pay property taxes that live in that area that are adamantly opposed to this development, whether it's because of traffic or, and by the way, it's set up by design that there's not a traffic analysis until after the provision passes, just like it's set up to, by design, to run us ragged in an alleged public participation process. And out of the gate, just after the ink is dry, we immediately start to install high rises. Now, I would say that we should acknowledge the dialogue and the time that individuals spent writing those letters. And I would kindly ask those of you who are conservative leaning to start to do a little bit of research about some of the ideology that is guiding your city planners. It is very disappointing to many of us in this community how time after time, the voices of the taxpayers are ignored. And I have finally figured out why we are continually raising staff salaries. It took me a while. I'm kind of a knucklehead sometimes. Once I realized the reason why the school board is always raising the staff salaries, it's because it's a voting block. And that's exactly why you guys keep raising those salaries, because you guys made a promise last budget cycle that you would not, that you would keep that budget under control. And so now we're going to have another situation where property taxes are going to spike, and you've already broken your word. So I'm not understanding, I mean, just be honest with us. Just say, "Listen, we're going to continue to vote for increased salaries. We're going to continue to give incentives to city staff, and we're going to treat the plebeians and do whatever we want, and we're just going to lie to you during our campaigns." It's troubling to me that Amanda's presentation is not acknowledging those letters, and I would challenge one of you to have the cojones to acknowledge those letters. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
And with that, I will close the public hearing, and now I await a motion on this item, and then we can discuss it.
Well, questions about the motion? Like, if we make the motion for the higher zoning?
What's before you is the NCM, which came from, NCM?
So let me explain. I think the, the way the agenda's posted, it's from MF-18 to CD5. If the motion is to go to CD5, you would need six votes because that was not recommended by the commission, if I'm recalling correctly. What they did recommend was the less intense. So a motion for CD5, six votes. A motion for the less intense would be a majority.
And if it fails, they can't come back for like a certain time period? Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
There's a one-year waiting period now that the public hearing has been opened.
All right. And then-
But we have some options.
But I have a question. Why is CD5 on our agenda and not what the Planning Commission recommended?
Well, because the original application was still for CD5, but as the caption says, or a less intense zoning classification. So you have the option to go either way.
But CD5 is not what they recommended.
Right. But a lot of times, if you look at some of our past agendas where they don't recommend a less intense, they, they recommend simply denial of the request.
Yeah.
That still comes to us, still comes to the commission, to the council, even though the commission recommended denial. So the same here, the, the applicant still sought CD5. The commission recommended against it, and so now it's the council's option to consider either the less intense, as they recommended, or the original request of the applicant.
That's not what that less intense was designed for. Okay.
Mayor, do you want me to make a motion to get this on the table?
Yeah, please.
Make a motion to, to approve neighborhood commercial as approved by the Planning and Zoning?
I'll second that.
Is that a-
Yeah?
Is that a legit-
Yes, Mayor, that's a, that's a legitimate motion. Yes, ma'am.
So your, your, your motion is for-
Neighborhood commercial.
As recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Gleason, you seconded that?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. All right. Thank you.
And now that we got on the table, I thought that, heard the applicant mention he was acceptable with that. Is that correct?
Yes. The applicant indicated at the Planning Commission meeting that they would be acceptable to the neighborhood commercial due to the commercial uses they referenced.
Yeah, I, I watched the, the meeting, and I thought it was a really good discussion. And I will mention that the letters in the packet were no to apartments, and so that's not on the table anymore. So I think those concerns have been addressed, and I thought Planning and Zoning Commission did was really good.
Yeah. I have a question for staff. When, when Planning and Zoning then comes back with a lesser intense, you guys didn't weigh in on that. You just recommended the original application as that standard practice, where you guys don't go into and re-review what P&amp;Z has maybe recommended?
Correct. I'm prepared to talk to it today, and we don't object to it, which is why there's not a staff recommendation against it. It wasn't a bad idea, and I think we're supportive. We didn't do a full analysis because that takes time.
Yeah.
But yes, we will go through that process to make sure we have everything that you need and are okay with that request.
Just off, just since that, if you have a little bit of time to kind of look at, do you see anything with the neighborhood commercial recommendation that could be an issue at all?
No, the uses that were proposed by the applicant or he's been approached with are all uses that are permitted. There's a three-story building maximum, so even if they wanted to do some sort of high rise, it won't get up to five stories, which the Character District 5 would have allowed. It will still require all of the traffic impact analysis and any other, you know, drainage requirements. All of that applies, no matter what the zoning is.
I think I'm good. And I do want to commend P&amp;Z on this one. They had a pretty thorough discussion.
Yeah. It was really, really good discussion and a good solution, I think. Are y'all ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. And what we're voting on is neighborhood commercial.
The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right. In that case, we are through with the public hearing, so we will go back to the items that are pulled from the consent agenda, and we'll start with item two.
Consider approval of ordinance 2023-71 on the second of two readings, adopting the Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan as a comprehensive plan of the city of San Marcos, adopting the preferred scenario map therein as a future land use map of the city, repealing prior ordinances which adopted and amended the previous comprehensive plan, vision San Marcos, a river runs through us, and the associated preferred scenario map designations and providing new associated designations from the preferred scenario map, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date.
And I'll make the motion to approve. Looking for, was that you, Mr. Scott? We have a second from Mr. Scott. One of the reasons why I pulled this is, is this is a multi-year project, and there are so many people who've been involved. I just wanted to thank everyone, our, our staff, Ms. Vialobos took, took the lead on this one, and, and of course, Ms. Hernandez supporting, and I'm sure there were others on the Planning and Development staff. We had others of city staff, but mostly it was the public. Thanks to y'all and the consultants for all of the outreach that you did. It was great. What was it, 6,000 comments, something like that? So anyway, I think that it was a, a good exercise, and I think we've got a good product at the end. So I just wanted to say that first, and then I've got something else to propose. Anybody else?
Yeah, I was supposed to say all of that. Good job.
Yes. Oh, and thanks to Ms. Garza and Mr. Scott, who were the council committee, who took this, this last round. Anything else? Okay. Here is what I would like to propose, and it's, it's just a, a direction, and then we'll let the planning staff, if y'all agree, run with it. That is, it's been brought to my attention that the fiscal considerations are a really, really important part of this document. We have references in the document itself. We do need to check the page number, the fiscal considerations. It says it's on one page, 137. I assume y'all are going to look at all of them because it's on page 139. And that there's a whole chapter in the appendix, lots of detail on the fiscal considerations. There's a couple of places in here that reference that. But the request has been to have an update of the fiscal information. To what level, I'm not sure. It may be top level, it, it, it may be more. And I know that costs us money to have that analysis. So what I'm requesting is that there be a separate document on the website, but the click for that is right next to the comp plan that would have some fiscal considerations and that we have that. And as far as I'm concerned, you could work with those who have been requesting that information to see exactly what is important, because I don't know, but other people do. And let's see what this is, because this is information about our community. The comp plan is where people who are looking to come to our community will be looking here, and so the fiscal considerations is part of that. So that's what I'm looking to see. I'll, I'll let Ms. Hernandez speak, and then I'll see if y'all are in agreement.
Happy to do so, if that's what the community and council would like to see.
Okay. Thank you. What do y'all think?
Sounds good.
All good? And, and I'm willing to leave it up to y'all to figure out what, what that, would, would you and Ms. Vialobos figure out what that needs to be?
Thank you.
But I do agree, because one of the reasons that I was concerned is we had this process for so long, is the data in there was old. And so to get, and I don't mind it being old if we mark it as the date that, that it was created, but I think the idea of having a separate document to provide updated fiscal information, so we don't, because we don't want to keep amending the comp plan, I think that's a good one. So Ms. Reyes, I think we're okay with that. Are y'all good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then the other thing is to make sure that there's a way to get from the document, if you just have the document or the appendix, to get back to that other document. So however, if it's a link in the document back to the other one, however y'all figure that out would be a good thing.
Yes, ma'am. I think ultimately, we'll end up putting it in our flipping book, which will get us back and forth, and then we can include PDF links as well.
Okay. There will be a PDF version of this out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, always.
You know, I have trouble with the flipping book, and that's really what it's called.
Yes, ma'am.
That's really the name of it. That's the software. I think that's everything on my notepad. Thank you. Y'all ready to vote?
You got the, the recommendation that Ms. Moore said about the appendices? That's, that's what we're talking about, is we're going to have a separate document that's going to include all of that. So people are interested in the fiscal, and they'll, they'll all reference each other. Okay, okay.
So I think we'll be okay.
Y'all been doing good with the, with the applicable links. Y'all been doing good with the, with the applicable links? What? What did I say? Can I ask Ms. Moore for clarification?
You certainly can.
So, the, my earlier request was for the appendix to be referenced in the table of contents.
I'm going to let Ms. Hernandez respond to that.
I think as a non-substantive edit to the table of contents, we can, we can just do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured y'all, you would catch that anyways. They're really good with the little details, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am, we can, we can do that administratively after the adoption in a couple of seconds.
And, because that's just adding a feature. Yes, and, yeah, because when I went through this today, there's multiple references to the fiscal considerations and the appendix, but now we're creating something new. So, y'all figure out how that all plays together nicely. Okay. Are we ready to go?
I don't, I don't, yes?
This takes five votes to pass?
Oh.
Yes. Comp plan does. I, I don't know why. It just does.
Ninety-nine years later?
Yes, that's the importance.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
Can we do a happy dance? All right. Seven oh, and we will, I think it is, I think it may be. It's in code somewhere. Okay. Ms. Venia, would you read item four, please?
Consider approval of resolution 2024-200R approving an extension of the lease with the San Marcos Area Chamber of Commerce for the land located at 202 North CM Allen Parkway until October 16, 2031. Authorize the city manager her designate to execute said lease extension on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion?
Send move.
Motion by Mr. Scott.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Scott, I believe you pulled this.
Yeah, I did pull this. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
It's a different one you wanted to pull, perhaps?
It may have been.
Yeah, I've got item 10.
Well, I mean, I have a comment for this one.
Why don't you do that while Mr. Scott's thinking?
I, I just wanted to say, like, thanks. And we talked about this, so maybe that's why you got confused. Thank you for, to the staff for including all the history. I think that's something we had asked for last time we talked about. So, all of that presentation, I think it's really good. And to just name that I received a lot of community correspondence and feedback in support of this and just to say that I have been very happy with the chamber. And in particular, their, kind of the new vision and vibe that they have with community engagement. So, I'm happy to support this. And the rationale is easy to explain to our neighbors because of all the conversation we've had, but also all the, the history and the impact, so.
I have a massive migraine, so.
Then you're, then you're doing amazingly well.
Well, that's what I want to get to as well, is how long they've had the chamber and how well they've integrated and helped our community with businesses. And I just want to see it growing and going. So, that was it.
That's it? Yeah.
A great organization, yeah, I got those sentiments, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure in that history, when it talked about, we went from the, the lease payments that whenever the chamber got ready to expand, the city discovered that there were a lot of back lease payments that we had never advised the chamber they needed to pay and the chamber didn't know they needed to pay. And the chamber president came to me and said, if you add all this up and the penalties and interest, the money that we just raised for the expansion kind of goes up in smoke. So, I brought it to the council and we forgave all of that so that the chamber could use the dollars that they had raised for, for the expansion. So, that was a good thing back in the day. Y'all ready to vote?
Yep.
All right.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, now, item 10.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-20R approving a change in service to the agreement with Texas Disposal Systems, Inc. for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclable materials to extend the term of the agreement for five additional years. Authorize the city manager her designate to execute the appropriate documents to implement the extension and declare an effective date.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to get this on the table. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Scott is seconding it. Mr. Scott, I go to you first.
Okay. I, I understand what the competition is driving, you know, other companies to want to participate in this. But I haven't seen anything yet that compares numbers or any of that. Do you, does that company, do you happen to have any of that stuff?
To whom are you directing your question, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, okay. Have you seen anything that gives us numbers that compares to TDS? As far as the?
Which numbers are you talking about specifically?
From the comparator.
Talking about numbers, you're talking about services, Mr. Scott?
What's that?
You're talking about services, the type of services?
Yes, exactly.
Let's talk about some of the, in the background information in our packet.
Yeah, we've, they were just acquired by the new company and so they'd have some of the services, but they're not local. So, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with in the future.
Well, I'm, I'm going to vote for it, but that's just kind of what I was wanting to know if there's anything that kind of, can look at to kind of compare more closely.
It was in the packet and I'm looking for the page number and I'm not seeing it right now. But, but the, but that was addressed, all the different services that we get from TDS and what the options were in the area, something that's reasonable enough within driving distance. So, it was in here and I'm sorry, I just can't find it right this minute.
Yeah, I understand that about TDS, I'm talking about the other guy.
That's what I said, they looked to see if comparable services were available in the area.
Yeah, graph or something.
Right. I didn't see it in this packet, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in a table, kind of.
Yeah, it's here. Somewhere.
Page 524.
Thank you. 524?
I downloaded my packet really early, so my numbers could be totally different.
Oh.
Any of your staff know what page this is?
The short answer, Councilmember Scott, is at this particular time, with the company we have is the best option. We will be going, going out in, what, three and a half, four years, start the process because it takes a long time to go through it. And we're looking for multiple companies to, to bid. And the only criteria we'll have is our residents like the services we have now, so they're going to have to be able to do what we do now.
That's kind of what I was looking for.
Yeah, it's, it's in the executive summary at the beginning of the document. I thought it was at the end. Yeah, they addressed that.
I guess my, so I want to name and I've, I've reiterated this on multiple occasions that I personally have been really happy with TDS. Working with Amy, anytime there's like an issue or if there's like a, a situation where folks didn't understand, like how do you bundle up their stuff or bulk pickup or whatever, I've, I've, I've been very pleased with the services. I think I'm, I'm happy that you pulled this, Shane, just because I do think it's important to name for our, like, neighbors that we discussed this, what was it, last year or something? That we were going to expand for five? And that we are going to be pursuing an RFP? Is that, is that my understanding after that?
Absolutely correct, correct.
And so I think it's like hard to balance because I, I personally feel some, like, pleased with the services, but I also hear some neighbors expressing like this is such a substantial cost to the city. And so, the feedback I'm getting is like, Alyssa, the math isn't mathing. Like, if you, if you're really going to be like a responsible elected official, you have to be open to the notion that perhaps there's something better and, or comparable or revisit terms. And it's, I struggle to be able to answer that aside from, we hear you, we're in the process of exploring things. For right now, we're going to stick with this for five years and then explore after?
Yes, we're definitely going to explore. And one thing I want to kind of bring forward that you'll see when we come back with the RFP is you'll see a long contract. And the purpose of that is, because let's say it's a different company. They invest a lot in trucks, in cans. And if they only do that over five or 10 years, their prices are going to be way up. But if they can push that out, then they, we can have a reasonable price. So, that's the reason, any garbage contracts in the country are long. Some people might say, well, that's a long time. But it's kind of like your house. If you had to pay your house off in five years, what would those payments be? But over 30 years, it's, it's manageable, so that's.
I don't know, I don't own a house, but I think I get to.
Or a car.
Neither of that. Okay, cool. I guess for the, for the timeline of it all, when does that, when do we begin to discuss that RFP situation? Because I feel like last time it kind of like caught us off guard and then it was like a hot mess express. So, I don't want to like replicate that.
Exactly, so Amy Temidi's Community Enhancement Initiatives Manager, sorry. We're going to start that mid-2028, probably starting it a little earlier with purchasing because I know there are a lot of RFPs in queue. So, we may be starting it earlier just to start that language. But then we'll be going out and then we'll be starting that whole process to be ready for a rollout October 1, 2030 for the, with the new contractor, whoever it may be.
Cool.
And just to address the cost, if they're looking at their garbage rate, remember that's more than just their curbside service. It is going to be Green Guy, brush drop-off, pharmaceutical drop-off, household hazardous waste, everything that we do within our programming. So, that's part of that whole bill. And then TDS is freezing the rate for the first year of that five-year contract to our FY 25 rate, just so you're aware of that and you can articulate that to your neighbors as well.
Awesome, yeah, I think I asked last time when we talked about this if there was a way to like map out or see numbers regarding those services and who uses them, like bulk pickup? Did, were y'all, did you ever do that?
We created some maps and I gave them to the city manager's office to distribute. But I will, we can also create an updated one. We did an, an annual or a fiscal year one, so I can do that as well. We did it for the bulk pickup, community cleanup, brush drop-off and household hazardous waste.
Excellent, yeah, just because our neighbor that came and spoke was satisfied with the services. But I think that is a valid observation. Yeah, maybe we need to increase some of those things, I guess.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Prather?
Police, fire, utilities, roads, parks, these are some of the major services that the city provides. But a, a big one that just goes sometimes forgotten, especially when it's not a problem, is trash pickup. I mean, it can be like the Achilles' heels of municipal government when there's a labor dispute or something and it's a summer month and there's no trash pickup. You know, these are, you know, these nightmare scenarios you hear about that happen in other cities. We've never had any of those problems in the 20 years with our partnership with TDS. They're a great partner, they're a one-stop shop for all their services. The, them becoming one of the leaders, if not one of the first ones that started the single-stream recycling, that always had a lasting impact on me. And for our, our citizens and viewing, viewing public, the way this works, this TDS contract is for residential. There is still a lot of room with our commercial for other trash providers. For example, Republic, by the way, you have an amazing account man with Alfonso. You've made those inroads, relationships with many businesses across town and I think there's room for growth, especially within our commercial divi, our commercial trash pickup. But, you know, my main sentiment with TDS is they're a very reliable contractor, probably one of the most reliable contractors this town has ever had. And like I said, been no problems. And I think, you know, we're, we're in good hands with them doing this service, this contract with our city.
And that's what I had to say, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I think we have good service as well. But I think I owe it to my, our constituents to take it out to bid and compare apples to apples and see what's actually out there. We discussed this four or five years ago and I figured we were going to do it this time around, but we didn't have that much support. But with all that being said, is this a new contract we're talking about? Okay, when it, on the last one, you're saying that we can bring five cubic yards to the land side?
Yes, it's always been in the contract that, that residents can bring five cubic yards of brush, vegetative debris to the TDS landfill or their comp, their composting, mulching facility.
Yeah. Maybe it's too late now, but I would love to add somewhere to whoever gets this contract next time around that we can bring also other items in brush because we do it, what, three times a year now, but we have that.
We have four times a year.
Right.
Yes.
And people do kind of, you know, get trash and, and.
Yes.
Bords and whatnot. Other than that, that, that all I have to say, but I really wanted to see a, a bid on this. Thank you.
Yeah, I think to Mr. Gonzalez's point, just having those numbers of the usage and stuff will help us prepare for stuff like this because it's like, I know what I'm hearing from my neighbors. But it would be helpful to have numbers for the future, just to, to be able to make sure that, or like the need, because Mr. Carr said like, our neighbors are content with the service and I, I believe it, but it'd be helpful to have that qualitative data to support that.
And if it's, if you would like for us to provide to the city manager's office at, you know, at the beginning of every fiscal year, what happened the prior fiscal year and the number of bulk pickups, community cleanup attendees, brush and everything else that we do with a map, so you get an idea of where everybody is coming from, we're happy to do that.
Yes, yeah, my just, my concern is if folks don't know how easy it is to do, like, I think that's one of the, the reasons why they don't do it. Because I didn't move into a house until the first year I was in office. So, I didn't have to worry about any of that and like the yard, oh, the HOB writing me up. But, um, yeah, but y'all made it really easy for me. So, then, anytime I have a new neighbor, I go spread the good word, so.
Mr. Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Amy, and thank you, Mr. Carr, for everything you guys have done, working with TDS. They definitely have been an asset to the city as, as far as I've seen. But I am definitely somebody who is in favor of, of just seeing competition. That being said, I want to give the opportunity, I do see Republic is here. Since we will be having this come up in five years, I'm hoping that Republic is still around. I'd like to hear, my main concern here is compost. As the city evolves, it's going to become more important in our everyday life. I'd like to see, to me, that seems the biggest difference between TDS and Republic or some of our closest competition. I'd like to hear what Republic has planned or what they have in state right now for not only compost, but for like Green Guy relationships. So, if we do switch over in five years, are you still going to work with Green Guy? What kind of relationship are you going to have with the local businesses here to ensure recycling is happening on a local level? Please.
Great question.
Yeah, good evening, council, I'm David Butler. I'm the general manager for Republic Services here in Austin and actually continued on after Central Texas Refuge was acquired by Republic here recently. And to answer your question, council, yeah, we absolutely can offer those services. Now, today we don't have our own facilities for compost in the way that TDS does. However, we do have a partnership here with a local disposal facility to handle and support that. So, as far as taking compost, green waste today, that's no problem whatsoever. And I think as we see that grow for our business here in Austin, we would absolutely look at growing and investing in that type of facility here. That's something that, again, for us, huge opportunity for us to support the community and we're really just looking for a good partner like the City of San Marcos to do that with. So, I think I'd be 100% on board. And again, we'd love to see it go out to bid here so we could provide, I think, some of those numbers that y'all are looking for here, for a competitive offer. But that's of course up to council.
What about your working relationship with, example, Green Guy that we have here in town? Would you guys have a partnership with them like TDS does? I'm just interested in seeing how the wealth is spread through our local businesses.
Oh, yeah, no, I think that we're absolutely up for partnering with local, with local companies, right? And that's, I think, where we have a local partnership here with a composting facility that we, we work with today, right? So, as far as partnering with another company like a Green Guy, I, I don't see any reason why that would be an issue for us operationally.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Just to kind of add on that while you're up there, like, so recycling, y'all sub that out or you have to move the recycling like to North Austin? Am I reading that correctly?
Well, we have our own MRF that we own up in Hutto. Now, we do sub out the operation of that MRF today to a local recycling company called Balcony's Resources. So, they operate that on our behalf today. However, we do have two disposal sites for a single-stream recycling that we utilize today through Balcony's. And they've been a great partner for us and again, an expert there in that, in that realm that we can really partner with. And of course, Republic Services as, you know, a leader in the industry nationwide, we actually have. we actually have, uh, some plastics facilities in particular that I can provide some information on. Uh, those in particular are looking to really take recycling of plastics to the next level. Rather than taking like a plastic bottle as an example, recycling that into something like a shirt or carpet, you can take that same bottle and recycle it multiple times into a food-grade safety, uh, food-grade safe plastic bottle again. So things like that are the things that I know our business here locally, uh, you know, again, in the past, Central Texas Refuge, now as a part of Republic Services, really excited about that type of technology and investment in sustainability. And that's something that, again, we're looking to bring here to the Austin market and San Marcos and similar communities in the area.
I remember some years back, there was kind of somewhat of a scandal about recycling going, you know, shipping, basically just shipping overseas. The recyc- you y'all, y'all, y'all's recycling stays.
Yeah, our our recycling's here stays stays local, right? So we are, we're selling that out to local mills, local, you know, plants that are going to be repurposing that. Uh, there certainly was a lot of, uh, waste that was going over to, uh, China in the past. However, again, like you said, markets changed dramatically since then, so I can't really speak to other companies.
And Mayor, I think we're getting a little.
Yeah.
I think so, because this is to approve this contract.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, this is some of the stuff that's in the backup in our packet, you know, talking about.
Yeah.
The other.
We talked about it, but we kind of diverged and our city attorney's keeping us on track as he's supposed to do. So.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I got a couple things to say here. So, um, first off, I've been very happy with TDS, right? Like, I get, we have very few complaints from any of my constituents, my neighbors, and I've been, I've been really happy with, um, with the services they provide. That being said, I was very adamant, and we got outvoted on this a year ago, that this should have gone out for an RFP, period. We have a fiduciary duty to our constituents to offer up the best possible solution. And a 20-year contract with a a 30-year contract before we ever get an RFP out is not being fiduciary responsible. And, um, I don't know that any competitor is going to be able to outbid you. I I I, maybe not, but that should have been put on paper in front of everyone as a proposal. And I, you know, I've said it in the past that there's a lot of danger in that. Um, you know, if if in the transition, if that were to happen, things go south, this trash is going to end up in the parking lot out here and we're all going to be out of jobs, right? And and so there's, 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 there's real, these aren't discussed enough, as important as this stuff is, the, you know, the streets, the roads and trash, right? And I have problems with this going out to 2030 before we get an RFP. I I I just, as much as I'm happy with it, as much as I think they do a great job, um, I said it a year ago and I'll say it again, this should be going out for an RFP again. And so I will be voting no tonight. And it's not because of the services you provide. It's not because of the things you do or complaints that I get. It's because I I we owe it to the constituents, to, um, and to competitors. Competition is good. And it would be good to see on paper, all the other proposals might be out there. We don't know. We don't know. And so, um, I I want to know that my no vote is not a shout against you in any way, shape, or form. It's simply, I I said it a year ago and I'm going to stand by my conviction that it it the fiduciary duty to this is to, um, try to see, get the best I can for my constituents, even with my concerns of the possible consequences of that. Um, in fact, that probably outweighs some of my other things. So I will be voting no tonight, but it has nothing to do with the preserv- the services you provide, the partnership you have done and the things you have done during floods and everything else. I'll never forget the stuff that you guys did. Um, and so, um, I I almost have a, uh, hint to postpone this until after the election because we are going to potentially see, uh, we will see two new council members up here. And.
Oh, that's right.
And and so I.
I totally didn't even think about that.
Yeah, it's, and it's one of those, because it goes up to 2030, um, before the before the RFP, it's going to be three and a half years probably, right? And so, um, I kind of lean toward that, but I don't, I don't know that that's going to solve any problems either. So, um, I'm, I'm going to stop right there for now and hear what the rest of my constituents have to say.
Constituents?
I could, I meant colleagues.
We're constituents, I guess we are.
Colleagues.
Hold on, who put the motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve on the table, but I'm just, I want to hear what everybody else has to say about a potential postponement after the election or what I had to say.
If I could interject, so if it was postponed and we took it out to RFP, it'd be what, two and a half years before we could come back? Year and a half? Anyway, these things take so long, um, that.
Well, I mean, the contract is through October 1 through 2025. And I, and I, and I understand that, right? And that might have to be something that may have to be negotiated a shorter term or whatever. I just, I just fundamentally have a problem with us locking this into 2030 without ever having discussed it, right? Like having given either competition or or anything else. And like I said, it's nothing negative. It's just the 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 term of it and and how we got here, right?
And and Mayor, normally, uh, real quick, just normally you should have the motion first to postpone and then discuss.
I I I'm throwing it out there. I want to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Yeah, i- i- if the if the council acquiesces to doing that, but technically you should normally have the motion before a discussion, but if if there's no objections, you're welcome to.
Well.
Talk, comment on a postponement.
Still thinking about it.
I'm I'm walking the line on that one. It's my, thank you.
But you didn't mean like postpone and then send out for an RFP, right? It's just postpone and let a potentially totally different council make the decision that they have to live with for three years.
Just potentially giving the new council members a chance to weigh in on this because how important it is and they're going to have to deal with ramifications. And they will be involved with the RFP process if it's, you said three and a half years, not two and a half, right? So it would be passed.
It's going to be passed a lot of people.
Yeah.
It passed me.
Well, we had the same discussion.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We had the same discussion five or six years ago. And, um, to my understanding, this time around, we're going to do it as we discussed. And I probably be voting the same way as my colleague. And the reason it's not against y'all guys is the way the process, because we told our constituents we're going to do it next time around and it hasn't happened. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Did we tell our constituents we're going to do it next time around? I think in 2023 we said we are going to make it to extend it.
We brought it to you in October of last year to make sure this is what we wanted to do.
Talking about the five year before that.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
I I don't remember that, but but just because I don't remember, it doesn't necessarily mean it didn't happen, but.
Well, we got a little pause. I would like to thank Ms. Tamiti's for being on top of this all the time. She remodeled the contract a little bit, pulled some of the stuff that should be in appendixes out so that we can modify and change them easier, uh, the things that change on a regular basis like our facilities and stuff. Um, so as always, she's done a good job on this.
Yeah, and and in fact, if I thought that staff or anybody was, anything was going up, I would would absolutely be having a meltdown about this, right? But I do think staff has worked very well with them to get what the city needs, right? And you get what the constituents needs. There isn't really anything in there that jumps out at me like, hey, that's terrible. This is just about the process and and the length of time, right? And.
Okay, get, we we got that. What I would like to thank Ms. Tamiti's and 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 others if 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 that's needed, is the educational materials. Whenever the schedule comes out, it goes on the side of the refrigerator and the list of what goes where, goes next to it on the side of the refrigerator. And and I keep that. And I like it that it's concise. It's well done. Um, so I want to thank you for that because that helps me stay on track with when to put the card out and wait a minute, it's Thanksgiving, what's that? Anyway. So thank you for for all of those materials because that helps us use the system properly and what bulky waste means and how you do that. So I wanted to be sure that I thanked y'all for those. I'm going to say that I'm ready to vote on this tonight. I'm ready to say yes. We had the whole discussion a year ago about whether we were going to go out to bid or not. I I get being outvoted. I tell people I have been outvoted on television and in public before, um, more than once. But the decision by the council was made to go ahead and go with this contract. I'm going to go with the contract. I'm happy with TDS. I'm happy with y'all picking up at my house. I like your responsiveness when, uh, we have a flood or something and we need some extra help. So I appreciate that. So I'm good with it. I'm ready to say yes because I'm happy with the service. And whatever happens in a few years, I'll leave in y'all's hands. So I'm good with it. Anybody else? If not, Mr. Vino, I noticed this been blinking over here, so I guess you're ready for us to vote whenever we're ready to vote. So we'll vote now.
The motion passes 5 to 2.
Okay. So that takes care of item 10. We have done the last of what was on the consent agenda. And now we're ready to move forward with item 13. And just so y'all know, I'm making the motion. Uh, we can take a break if y'all, y'all want to take a break now?
Yeah.
I was going to do it at 7:30, but we'll do it now.
Yeah, a a good little.
Um, be back at 7:30. On our break, and it is now time for item 13.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-208R, approving a Chapter 380 Economic Development incentive agreement with HEB LP under the city council's open solicitation and offer of incentives to grocery stores to locate in the city that provides incentives for HEB to construct a new grocery store at the southeast corner of IH, IH 35 and McCarty Lane in the form of refunds of a percentage of additional property and sales tax generated by the new store over five years authorized the city manager or designee to execute said agreement and declare an effective date.
Motion.
To approve.
Motion to approve and.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Smith.
Uh, the community mayor, council, Christians of economic development manager, city of San Marcos. Um, today, staff is, uh, requesting council consideration of approval of a Chapter 380 agreement with HEB. Uh, before we go any further, just want to acknowledge that we do have Mr. Jared O'Brien here from HEB to address any, uh, questions that the council may have, uh, before, before any vote. Um, uh, do we have a presentation queued?
I don't know.
Well, I can, I can, I can still get it started while while they're getting it together. So the, uh, the, um, the project, oh, here we go. Next slide, please. So back in in May, council voted to adopt a resolution that would support tax incentives for grocery store developments. Next slide, please. On August 19th, HEB submitted an application requesting incentives under this resolution, and the applicant specifically cited council's resolution as having a material impact on proceeding with this project. Next slide. So a little background about the project itself. It's a 100,000 square foot grocery store that will be located on approximately 18 acres on the southeast corner of I-35 and McCarty Lane. An estimated capital investment of $53 million that would generate approximately 212 full-time jobs and the additional 238 additional part-time jobs. Next slide, please. Uh, here's just an, oh, let me go back to the aerial. Uh, this is just an aerial map to showing visually where the where the project is located. Next slide. So the proposed terms of the agreement would be to construct, for HEB to construct a minimum 100,000 square foot grocery store that would be open to the public on or before December 31st, 2026, uh, and to have an 80% property and sales tax rebate drawing down over five years based on the following schedule. It's a little hard to to see on the screen, but essentially it it mirrors council's resolution back in May that would award an 80% property and sales tax rebate to HEB on year one, same amount on year two, and then drawing down through years three through five, 60, 50, and 25% respectively. Next slide. Uh, this slide's a little harder to read, but, um, it just shows potential revenue to the city. Uh, top, top graph is, uh, property tax rebate. The bottom one is sales tax. Um, over that five-year period, we would estimate an approximately, um, a little over $100,000 in city rebated property taxes while retaining, uh, about $600,000. And then on the sale tax side, would be approx- rebating approximately $1.4 million in sale taxes and retaining about $1 million over that five-year period. Next slide, please. Uh, just another way to visually look at that. So, um, this is potential revenue to the city and our other taxing jurisdictions. Um, I would note that no other taxing jurisdiction, um, in our community is participating in this incentive. It's just the city, but just so you can visually see what that what that impact would look like. Um, so again, a total rebate, uh, from the city of about $2.2 million and then netting over the five-year period, $1.6 million of new tax collections, $1.5 million approximately netted to the county, and about $2.4 million approximately netted to the San Marcos School District. Um, so if you were to look at that, what that would look like from a, from a rate of return perspective, it's about a 72% rate of return, um, for for this project. Um, and then again, you can see the five-year taxes for Hays and San Marcos ISD on the bottom. Next slide. So the EDSM Board, Economic Development, San Marcos, voted on September 26th, uh, to recommend this project and the proposed incentive to city council based off of the schedule that I outlined earlier. Next slide. And staff recommended, uh, council approved the Chapter 3 economic development agreement with, uh, HEB as presented. Next slide. And there's just a summary of the terms for your review as well.
Can lead us off.
Any questions?
Credit goes where credit's due. Thank you, Mayor Houston, for pushing this forward. Um, I hope this is a great example of what happens when political leadership and everyone gets on the same page. Things can get done. So this will greatly improve the quality of life for our citizens. And, um, thank you for everyone's head of partner.
I want to thank everyone. Also, I want to thank Mr. Pentalian and Mr. Smith for a brilliant idea of doing something that sounded weird at the time, just making known, gee, this is what we're willing to do. Um, I appreciate it. And, um, Mr. O'Brien, contact, contact, I did the happy dance in the office. I really did. Uh, we got the right staff together and things are moving forward. That's very exciting. Um, I think HEB is such a wonderful partner, um, in our community. They're always there when we need them. If you have not read the article in Texas Monthly, which you can find texasmonthly.com, as to how they prepare for flooding and disasters, et cetera, um, they they are on it and and they, uh, are all, they are prepared as need be and and deliver what's needed to the community. So I just thank HEB. I was on the food bank board, president for eight, for eight years, president for two. Um, I know the advice that you give when we're talking about bringing, uh, building a new, uh, food bank. Y'all actually loaned one of your folks to us. I think he met with us over 10 times, um, probably 40 hours. So that was very helpful for, uh, uh, design. And so HEB, I think, is just wonderful. And I'll just go let somebody else talk for a while.
I'll start in, Mayor. Um, I am, I am thrilled that this gets to be one of my last votes. Um, what a, what a wonderful way to go out, right? And I I want to thank staff and my colleagues. Um, I I'm hearing from people that this is a really unique thing that we did, to preemptively offer up an incentive where they don't have to come in, they know where we stand. And if the community really wants and needs something, you know, go out and do it. And and so I think we kind of set a precedent here of, if you want to incentivize something, offer it straight up. And I think you can get it done. And I want the community to understand that, um, this, this, this offer still stands. That I would love to see a discount grocer, uh, something else come in and take advantage of this. And and and, uh, thanks for HEB for being the first one. And I said it that night, they're going to take advantage of it. And and they didn't take very long and they did. But this may have taken another year, two, three, four years, had we not done this. And the community asked for it and and staff came up with a way to do this. And, uh, so I'm, I'm thrilled about this. I hope the community understands that, um, this offer was not done directly for them. This was done for, to incentivize additional grocery stores. Um, and that this wasn't just a direct offer to HEB. They just happened to be the first one to pounce on it. So, um, I'm looking forward that I hope we get another one of something else. Um, Aldi, I'll say it again. Uh, but, um, you know, and I also want to commend, uh, staff that this is a, this is the kind of thing that you can do again for some other things too, right? That this is a way to go out and, uh, don't have to negotiate to say, this is what we have to offer. And, um, and and here it is. So thank you for HEB for taking advantage of this. The community is thrilled. And you're going to see it in the numbers, I'm sure. And, uh, thank you for keeping the other two open. That was the main thing I heard from people was, please do not close the little HEB.
That's right.
And so, uh, I, there would be real backlash, I think, if you did. So, um, the fact that this is an actual additional grocery store and not just losing an asset and gaining something else away from the downtown and from the community or from the, from the College Center. So, um, thanks to staff and, uh, thanks to my colleagues and looking forward to going out there and going shopping. I don't have to drive down to New Broffels to go or fight traffic on 80 all the time. It's going to relieve some pressure. So thanks to everybody and, uh, can't wait.
Yeah, it's going to make the current big HEB.
Less busy.
Easier to navigate. We just got to figure out what we're going to call this next one. Maybe it's going to be the new HEB.
Big HEB, little HEB, and new HEB.
Yeah, well, the downtown is, you know, the tiny but mighty, uh, HEB. But anyway, Mr. Mendoza.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Of course, thank you to H-
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Of course, thank you to HEB. Uh, great partners in the state of Texas that you guys have proven time and time again, not just when you step up to it, but environmental impact. You guys have been a great evolving company for Texas. So, thank you so much. Uh, thank you to the staff. Uh, I've said before, born and raised here in San Marcos, there's always just been a food desert in that part of town. We've seen the growth happening here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, Christian, Mr. Smith, thank you for the work that you've done, um, taking direction and really going outside the box and just being creative with this, and I appreciate that. Uh, this is a testament to this council of how we are moving forward. We've continued to move forward. We know what it's like to stand still, and here we are moving forward that, I mean, I hate to put anybody else down, but this is very productive of the council. We haven't had this kind of productivity for a while. So, I'm very proud to be part of this. I'm very proud to be colleagues of these staff that have worked tireless hours for this. Thank you for moving the city forward. But what shines out to me here is that two point four million dollars that goes to our students here in this town.
Yep.
To go to this district that deserves it so very much. We keep talking about the, you know, the children are our future, and here we are as council, as mayor, as staff, proving that they are our priority. So, thank you to everybody who has done this, and thank you to my colleagues for just enforcing what sounds good.
Awesome. Ms. Garza?
Okay, so I just wanted to, again, echo gratitude to HEB and city staff for finally securing an HEB on the east side, 'cause last time I almost cried about it. Um, um, something our community has been asking for, for so long. Honestly, it, it almost feels like wrong to take any credit for this, um, 'cause we've been in this for a while. I think credit largely also belongs to our neighbors for being relentless in their ask. Um, despite not seeing much action, uh, over the last handful of years, uh, they have not stopped asking for this. And so, I think much gratitude to our neighbors for, um, just articulating their needs and not giving up. And then, um, thank you for naming that it was Mr. Pantalones, I say that with love, um, who brought up, you know, some innovative ideas. I think it's really encouraging to see staff come up with solutions like this. And yeah, and thank you, Mr. Gleason, for bringing up that this wasn't just, you know, a shout-out to HEB, but that we can, uh, let our neighbors know that the offer's still open to other grocery stores. But shout-out to our neighbors. Um, I think it's, it's a good lesson on being relentless on securing what you need. Um, yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I, this is something that San Marcos is so proud of, that we're gonna have another HEB. One of the biggest decisions I made so far, and, uh, I'm so excited. And I want to say thank you for the staff, especially for the mayor and my colleagues. Uh, it's gonna happen, guys. Just a matter of time. Thank you.
Mr. Vania, can we do a voice vote on this?
Yeah.
Sure.
Just cause.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. Prather.
Yeah.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza.
Yes.
Mayor Houston.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Definitely, yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Emphatically.
And Mr. And Mr. Mendoza.
Uh, superiorly, yes.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right. Thanks to everyone who helped make that happen.
Yeah.
Thank you. And on to item fourteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash two zero nine R approving the Alliance Regional Water Authority issuing contract revenue bonds for the city of San Marcos in the aggregate principal not to exceed forty-nine million four hundred eighty-five thousand, including approval of the bond resolution and other related matters. In accordance with the regional water supply contract, authorize the city manager her designee to execute any necessary related documents and declare an effective date.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Mr. Hewitt.
Howdy, Mayor Council, County Director of Utilities. Um, in your packet tonight you have a, a bond offering for, uh, repaying a bond anticipation note that you approved back in December, and also approval of the phase one C, one D Alliance Regional Water Authority, which will more than double of water capacity for us, uh, in a couple of years, uh, in phase one of ARWA. Tonight I have the executive director of, uh, Alliance Regional and members of our, um, MPH legal firm here, who's prepared all the bond documents. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Prather, you were on the board for a while.
Yeah, I was on the board and chairman for, uh, for a bit, and, uh, this is another one of those, um, big moments in our town's history, that we're gonna be able to secure water for a long time, for decades out. You know, the, the, the phrase that a society's best when people plant trees, it will never know its shade, you know? We're gonna be bringing on water that, you know, we may not even be able to use in our lifetime. So, great project, long-term thinking. Um, I'm glad we're, you know, this is just a, been a great council meeting. So, thank you for bringing it and, uh, making this happen.
Thank you. I'll weigh in on this one, too. Um, I've had the pleasure of serving on the executive committee, uh, executive board for Alliance with the mayor, and, uh, it's, it's been really insightful to see the planning that it took to get to this point, and the, um, the, the infrastructure that's being brought to the region, not just the community, um, for the growth that's gonna happen. And, uh, so I totally commend everyone that works at Alliance that has gotten us to this point, the former councils and the neighboring communities coming together and doing this. The Texas Water Development Board, we could not do it without the SWIFT funding. Um, you know, I talked about HEB being the biggest vote that we ever have tonight. We get to discuss the water, trash, and grocery stores.
Wow.
Like, I, I can't think of any better way to go out. Um, and so, you know, the forethought that went into all of this is, is, is really kind of hard to wrap your head around, and I can't commend the Alliance staff enough, the grant, the work Graham, you have done.
And cop plan.
Huh?
And cop plan.
And just casually, just casually the whole comprehensive plan.
Cop plan, too, man. So, um.
It's a big night.
It is a big night.
And it's only, it's not even eight o'clock yet.
I know, I know. So, but, I, you know, the community doesn't really understand Alliance. I, I really tried to, to explain that to a lot of people, but we should be proud to be part of it. We should be proud of the partnership we have with the other communities to get to this point. And this, this solidifies water for our community for a very long time. And it has gotten more expensive, but you have done it in a fiduciary duty, as, as good as you could do, right? Under the circumstances, how things have changed under COVID. So, I want to congratulate you guys getting to this point, and, uh, looking forward to drinking that water for the next fifty years. So, um, I'll be gladly supporting all of this, and, uh, and Graham, I can't thank you again enough, and the Alliance staff.
Yes. Thanks to all. And I, I think with Chris's departure, I'm now the senior member of the board, um. Which is neither here nor there, but it's been there a while. I think I replaced you, uh, Mr. Prather. So, yeah, this is, uh, great, wonderful things are happening tonight. So, um, are we ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. And on to item fifteen.
Fifteen, consider approval of adjustment to ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero one, which annexed approximately seven hundred and thirty-four point six acres of land into the city limits, smart terminal slash access to replace exhibit A description with an updated survey, which reduces the acreage annexed into approximately two, seven hundred and thirty-three point six acres, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date and approval of this ordinance on the first of two readings.
Motion to approve?
Motion by.
Second.
Mr. Mendoza, seconded by, um, Mr. Prather. Uh, presentation, are you here to answer questions? 'Cause what was in the packet, I thought, is pretty clear, so.
Here to answer questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions?
Great, clear.
I don't have any questions. I think we're ready to vote, Mr. Vania.
All righty. The motion passes five to zero with two absent.
All right. Moving on to item fifteen. I'm sorry, fifteen's what we just did.
Sixteen, hold discussion regarding the Convention and Visitor Bureau Advisory Board and the Main Street Advisory Board Recommendation Resolutions recommending the official naming of seven downtown alleys and provide direction to the city manager.
And this is discussion, because this came to us as a recommendation resolution from the Convention Visitor Bureau and the Main Street Advisory Board. So, we are looking at what came from them, uh, to us, which was really in response to direction that we gave some time ago, um, on our request to not name just one alley for a movie. So, let's name more of them, 'cause there's been a lot of movies made here, or at least partially made here. Um, so. Ms. Reyes, how do we want to go forward? Do we have presentation, uh, look through this? I guess there's several questions.
Responding to questions.
Okay. Well, one of them was, it says something about that we don't have a process to name alleys, but yet we did one the other day. So, I have.
Hello, Rebecca Ivar, our Director of Destination Services. Yes, ma'am. We do not, as, for naming streets, there isn't a planning and development process. So, yes, technically we don't, the process that we use is, we come to you as council, and we ask, would you like to name this? Here's the resolution, and then you make that decision.
Okay.
So, that's the process.
Process, although there's not another formal process.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, uh, so that's fine. And, um, the, the charge was to name unnamed, uh, to only look at unnamed alleys. I certainly didn't want to undo Kissing Alley, Jack's Alley, any of those others, but as it turns out, those aren't formally named. We've just been doing it for a long time?
Yes, ma'am. There has been no council action on any of those, um, of, there's a few that are listed in here, which are.
It actually says in the packet that Kissing Alley was renamed by the council in twenty-seventeen.
So, Kissing Alley in twenty-seventeen, Boyhood Alley in twenty-twenty-three, Jack's Alley has never been, uh, Felton Alley North, Felton Alley South, although those alleys actually have city street signs, although they're not, there's no resolution. Um, and then Telephone Alley have not been, um.
Right.
Officially named.
See, the, and, and that my, my intent was to not mess with those, but if they're not formally named, perhaps we need to just do that.
Yes, ma'am, and that is included as part of that. Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, so that, that was good. I'm glad y'all figured that out, and now we've got an opportunity to, to name those. Uh, but I'm still, oh, and then y'all decided to, the committee decided to name something, one of the alleys, okay, Music Alley, and then another one, Imagine Alley, and I think you said that's the one that's sort of become the mural central area.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, Imagine Alley started off as the private alley that is located next, or off of LBJ next to Shaggy, no, the dog.
Stinky Dog.
Stinky Dog, thank you.
You're talking about the one that's actually perpendicular.
Perpendicular, yes, thank you, perpendicular. And that one started off as, that one Imagin Alley, but because that one is a private alley, um, we started referring to the one that is parallel with LBJ behind, uh, the electric company. Um, we started naming that one Imagin Alley. So, we just, because they started adding more murals to that area, the same, the same group of individuals that use the private alley, they also inserted, um, murals on the backside of those buildings.
Is that what people have started calling that, or did this committee come up with that idea?
No, that was something that we started hearing, oh, gosh, it's been eight years now?
So, it's been out there?
Yes, ma'am.
I was at Red Bud Caf, or Red Bud, the coffee shop one time, and somebody called it. I was like, is that the name of?
Red Bud Roasters.
Red Bud Roasters, thank you. Mayor Council, just for reference, this is page twelve oh one in your packet, twelve oh one.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Pantalones.
So, I am, I'll just say, I'm, I'm good with what is in here, even the two that were not movies. Uh, but I will say that I'm very disappointed that we still have unnamed alleys. We got a list of movie names, we got a list of unnamed alleys, and somehow that didn't get matched up. Uh, this was an ad hoc committee, correct?
Yes, ma'am. You had given direction for, for council, um, different members had given suggestions for, uh, Main Street. I think that was, uh, Mark Gleason, and then somebody mentioned CVB, and then, um, it was confirmed by, um, Ms. Reyes, um, to do that, and then, um, to bring in other people as needed. So, we did bring in GSMP, a member of GSMP.
Which is fine. Okay. So, that committee is complete. Um, council, I would like to see this task completed because of the direction that we gave them. They did one, The Getaway, which was the one we specifically said we need to do. So, are y'all good with going with, with what's in the, uh, the resolution and the recommendation and formalizing that for that to come back? Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing, yes, okay. But still, well, we have a majority, uh, but we still have the unresolved alleys without names.
May I, may I add something?
You go right ahead.
Thank you. So, as the committee, um, we, or as a working group, we had the conversation of naming different alleys in downtown after movies. So, for example, we didn't want to name an alley after Piranha because the expectation that we already set, or the precedent we already set with, um, Boyhood Alley was, there was an iconic scene filmed in that alley. So, people would know, okay, there is a scene, there is the name. And so, that's the direction that, as a group, that they decided not to name every alley after a movie for that reason. Um, we did want to, The Getaway, much of it was filmed in, in downtown or in the San Marcos area. So, we found the nearest alley, which was the back of the bank. Yes, ma'am.
Now, that makes sense.
Okay, so that's the one that we found. We did discuss, we spent a lot of time going over a list of about sixty movies and television shows, and that is what was concluded. Now, creating a mechanism and, um, was the next step that we wanted, and then getting community input in regards to that. So, if we, additional input from you, if that's what you want, then that's the direction that we will take.
Yeah, the direction really had nothing to do with an iconic scene. For me, it was to just name alleys, um, after movies, so that the Boyhood Alley made a lot more sense. Because if you don't know that's that named after a movie, that's still, I, I think problematic. But.
Okay.
Yeah, got outvoted in public and on television. Um, so I would really like for this task to be completed, or at least get more alleys done. So, council, uh, we can point a new committee, we can give it to one of the committees that we've already got, or we could take it on. Not really wanting to go there, but I'm willing to do that if that's what it takes to get this done.
We'll be all the same.
Um, we've got the studio opening up very soon. Uh, I was, I forget the timeframe over in La Sima area.
It's gonna be a while.
Oh, I was wondering if, since we're gonna have production happening here locally, if we should postpone until we actually get something. I just don't know of too many films that have San Marcos as a significant, um, anchor, to be able to name alleys underneath it. I was just wondering if we could spice it up a little bit to throw, you know, Heron in there, or, uh, are there any famous directors or any famous playwrights that we have from the city? I mean, maybe not so much focusing on, uh, movies, but what about any kind of artistic contributions that have been significant to the world, um, muralists?
We could name one after Eugene Lee.
Just to provide significance to our downtown area, 'cause these are entertainment. These are.
Or, or movies that someone local had something to do with, whether or not they were filmed here. That broadens the, that broadens that. Um, wasn't exactly what I was looking for. I, to me, the significance was that they were filmed here, and you know, if we were in Maxwell, there'd be a long list over there, too.
That is very true in that.
Oh, yeah, there's a bunch of them over there. Uh, or even Martindale, there's several.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, Mr. Gleason?
You know, I, um, I, I think this is one where each alley should get its own name for something that's positive that happened there, or, and the Jack's name, right? Like, something negative that happened, right? And I think that brings a, a personal touch to the alley, not just naming it to name it. And I would love to see encouragement of, hey, we have an alley that's not named yet, go film something over there, and maybe we'll name it after you, kind of thing, right? So, I think there's, there's a way to maybe not completely do all of these right now. Like, I think there's, there's room here to encourage of something in the future. Um, and, and also, don't, I don't want to take away the personal touch to some of these alleys, like Jack's Alley, right? Like, it, that means something, that, an incident that happened over a hundred years ago at this point. And so, um, I'd just see it finalized, but I'm not saying we have to force it and say we have to finish this.
I'd like to at least get a few more done.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have to be all of them, but.
Because I think if you go in to start looking at some of these, there's probably an event, or a person, or a, a business, something that was, you know, memorable, historical that happened there, and I think that's what should be done, is gone and look at each one of these. And I think that's what should be done, is go on and look at each one of these and say, is there a way we can reference something that happened in the past or encourage something that maybe happened in the future, like imagination? How it just kind of naturally happened, right? So I don't think we have to go through and like, say, hey, let's do all these now, because who knows what might happen in the future.
May I add to that?
Yes.
Sure. So in the conversation, just what you're discussing there, that was a conversation of maybe we can have two alleys per year, two alleys per every other year, but reach out to the individuals that had businesses there or had something, and reach out to their families and take that route. So there was all these many ideas, but that was one of those that was discussed. They even had one, if you can get a sponsor, and then they would sponsor. We're like, hey, we're not going to commercialize them quite yet. But, you know, there was all kinds of ideas that were thrown out there amongst the committee and amongst the task force.
Maybe we could name them after businesses that were here for many years, like Dukeneers and others.
And that's what I was getting at, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd just like to see something.
Okay.
I think I kind of like the idea of really maybe doing a couple a year, or one a year, where you can really focus on that one and dig into the history of, or encourage, hey, this alley is going to be worked on next year. You know, it'd be a great way to say, hey, why don't you, if you happen to film something there? You know, I think there's a way to kind of promote each individual little section of downtown or these alleys and say, hey, those are the two we're going to do next year. And really let the community get involved in it and kind of, you know, put some energy into downtown a little bit. So I kind of like the idea of spacing this out and taking this and running with it and creating something unique every year possibly.
And if we want to do that, we're not limited to downtown alleys.
No, we're not, not at all. We could do, you know, two alleys every year somewhere in town and.
Oh, I'd do more than two.
And there's about, there are about, I believe it's 10 or maybe nine other alleys throughout the entire city that are not named, and some of those are in neighborhoods. Actually, most of those are in neighborhoods.
Yes, they are.
In new neighborhoods.
In which case, that's a whole nother, talk to the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
A prominent person that lived there or a business that used to be there. And, you know, there's a great way to bring in potential future things, you know? Things we're not thinking of, or something that might be filmed or whatever there. But also bring in the historical context of whatever history may have been there. Because I think there's things in the past, historically, that none of us are even aware of, that it's nice to be able to really focus on one and dig into it and see what we might be missing from historical from that, too. So I just like the idea of really spending energy on one or two and really involving the community. And then it gives you something to really focus on instead of doing them all at once.
Mr. Gonzalez, and I'll come to you. Come around this way. Ms. Garza?
I just wanted to say same with Mr. Gleason's suggestions.
Okay, but which group do we want to make responsible for this? Yes, but who would be responsible for taking on this project?
I think we could almost have a committee every year, you know, or appoint a board. Or Main Street and the CVB could take this up every year. I kind of like that the makeup of that board changes a little bit, and it's different perspectives. And that those two boards could take this up every year. Or form their own committees between the two, I mean.
I would add the Neighborhood Commission if we're talking about alleys out in the neighborhood. So get a representative from each of those, or two, or whatever.
Neighborhood Commission, too.
So I think we need to do that, okay. So let's talk about that on a future agenda. But let's go ahead and get these nailed, that we have agreement on, everybody's good with that? And formalize some of these names. So the street sign is correct.
And the cost is minimal because we already have template signs that we made. So it's our labor within our transportation department.
We'll just volunteer them to that. But they do such good work.
Yes, they do.
With the signs. So, Ms. Reyes, can this come back to us at a time that y'all feel that you're ready? But it's a, I don't know, resolution, ordinance, whatever. However you want to do it.
Yeah.
So that completes this item?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and thank the committee.
Will do, thank you.
Ms. Trevino, item 17.
The city council will convene in executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. One, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property to deliberate regarding the possible purchase or lease of land for the development of affordable workforce housing. Two, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. A, to receive legal advice regarding available options for the addition of projects under the River Bridge Public Improvement District authorized under terms of a settlement agreement with the original developer of the land within the boundaries of the district. B, to discuss the role of the city attorney related to boards and commissions.
All right. As always, this is posted on our three o'clock work session agenda. We did have this, these executive session items. We completed them, and so we do not need to go back into executive session this evening. Yay. Item ID?
Yes. Consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session items deliberated under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code during the work session and or regular meeting, just as stated above.
All right. On each of those items, we gave direction to staff. Any actionable items by the council will come back on a future agenda. So now we are to question and answer session with press and public. The gentleman that wanted to meet with me about towing, I chatted with him during the break, and we will meet at some point in the near future. I will need some assistance from staff in order to answer some of his questions. We had another person who had signed up, and he is, don't see him. Anybody in the audience or in the foyer wishing to participate? All right. Well, I'll tell you what, there being no further business, I'm going to adjourn us at 8:11. People watching this, that's 8:11, not an eight-hour meeting.